It is 6:00 PM. We will call the February 13th meeting of the County Board to order at this time. For Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment of Silence.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call?
Roll call shows 21 supervisors present.
This time I would seek emotion to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Ron McGill. Okay. Any discussion? We will call the vote. In favor press green. To disprove press...
21 yes, 0 no.
Agenda is approved. We will now go into members of the public question to be heard. You have five minutes. Okay, first up we have Karen Mueller.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Administrator. Mr. Scholz. Thank you for letting me speak again. I know some of you are probably getting tired of seeing me, especially the Executive Board. You've heard me speak on this subject two other times. But I wanted to come and speak before the full board. And so that's why I'm here again tonight. So please bear with me because some of this you have heard, the Executive Committee. My name is Karen Mueller. I'm an attorney locally. And for full disclosure, my husband Dean sits on this board. I want to say that there's a critical need for each of us to understand the imminent threats to our county, to our state, and to our country, and where they are coming from. This is true especially when our federal government is not vetting the refugees. I heard that last week there was a sheriff's conference in Washington DC. I don't know if our own sheriff was able to go to that. You weren't able to go, I'm sorry. But anyway, I saw a video of a sheriff from Butler County in Ohio who said that this was a conference that the FBI was putting on. And they were reporting that there were sleeper cells that were spreading out all over this country. Just waiting for a signal. And that is consistent with a letter that I handed out to the board for you to look at. And that was a letter that was sent out by former FBI leadership people to the Speaker of the House on January 17th. And I'm not going to go through the whole thing, obviously, I don't have time. But there was a few key phrases and sentences I wanted to just mention. "The danger arises from the nature of the threat itself." That's on the page one. And then it goes, "The threat we call out today is new and unfamiliar. It is modern history that US has never suffered an invasion of the homeland, and yet one is now unfolding. Military-age men from across the globe, many from countries or regions not friendly to the United States, are landing in waves on our soil by the thousands, not by splashing ashore from a ship or parachuting from a plane, but rather by foot. It would be difficult to overstate the danger represented by the presence inside our borders of what is comparatively a multi-division army of young, single adult males from many hostile nations and regions whose background, intent, and allegiance is completely unknown." And I'm just going to end with that part of it as they say, "The warning lights are blinking." And that's for all of us to understand. And you can read the rest, of course, at your leisure. I also wanted to mention another article that I handed out. And this was written by Gordon Chang. And he writes for the Gatestone Institute, which is a reputable online source of information and news. And his headline was, "They Are Coming to Kill Us." And he's talking about the large number, again, of military-age Chinese people that are coming in from the southern border. That's not specifically with the refugee resettlement, and yet it is related. I also want to talk about something I mentioned several weeks ago. And that was a Syrian refugee who had become a citizen. He came in 2012 to Fargo, North Dakota. And he became a citizen in 2019. And on July 14th of 2013, he ambushed four police officers. He killed one. He critically wounded two. And one heroic officer was able to kill him, neutralize the threat. In the wake of that attack, in the ensuing investigation, they were able to determine that he has his intended goal, once he had ambushed these four officers and killed them, that he was headed downtown to a Fargo street fair that had about... Well, it had several thousand people. I should say thousands of people. And the Assistant US Attorney assured us that if the officer hadn't killed him, that there would have been at least hundreds of people killed in Fargo. And yet, most of you probably did not hear about that story. And you should be asking yourself, "Why didn't that make the national news?"
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next we'll have Bonnie Christensen.
From Chippewa Falls. So I wasn't expecting to talk about chickens tonight, but I did do a little bit of research after a board meeting recently. And I didn't realize the vote was going to be this soon. But I did a bunch of research because it bothered me, if we don't inspect dog houses, why do we inspect and regulate chickens? And so I found a little information I thought was very interesting I wanted to share with you. Chickens don't have a bladder. Everything they produce comes out in one area, a little packet that lays on the ground. They have all kinds of different housing that they are perfectly happy with. You can have portable, you can have stationary, you'll lean to, a chick saw, an open field. You can have all kinds of things. You guys know a lot about chickens. They can have dirt floors, cement floors, wood floors, wire screen floors. And they're happy with all of those. But I did some research about chicken regulations around the state. And I found that in the southern part of Wisconsin, they're really strict about their chickens. And they make you be inspected. You have to have a matchy-matchy, prettyPretty house, new materials. This is northern Wisconsin. We have a variety of pocketbooks here. The reason people grow chickens is for their eggs, for production. Down south, there's one township that says you can't kill your chickens. Well, that's the best stew chicken. After they've finished laying, you cook them. You eat them, you don't throw them out, right? And I thought... And there's one township that said you have to clean the floor every day. What does a chicken like to do? It likes to scratch around. It is happy scratching around in a manure pile. So then the 50 feet away from a well, sounds great on paper, but remember chickens don't pee. You put the manure. The manure pile is what counts, not where the coop is. That 50 feet from a well, I'm not sure a handful of chickens is going to contaminate your well because it doesn't go down in. You have a floor, you clean it out. You can clean it out several times a year, you can clean it out monthly. There are all kinds of ways of doing chicken maintenance and their health. Any questions? But anyway, I thought if you have to pay somebody to go around and inspect, you're going to have mileage costs. Plus that, you guys still didn't take away the half percent state tax or city tax that we added on for the courthouse cost.
At 6:00 PM tonight.
And you don't need to make money.
I'd like to say.
And thank you very much. And you guys are great. I've spoken at three county board meetings. You're the best. You are the best.
Okay, thank you. Chuck Nagel.
Chuck Nagel, 5732 183rd Street at Lake Posota. First of all, I've had my hearing checked just recently, and it's plenty adequate. However, when I sit in the back, it is very difficult to hear some of the conversation that goes on. Not too bad up here. It's excellent with the clerk sitting next to me. Everyone can hear that. But in particular, it's the supervisors that are facing forward and not speaking loudly with no microphone on their desk. It's very difficult to hear. And in particular, it's a problem when you have a committee that meets in this room and you have three or four people sitting in the front having sort of a coffee conversation with the chairperson up in the front, and the public is way back there. I was here for a hearing in my neighborhood for rezoning. Much of it we could not hear. So when I come to this meeting, I bring an earpiece that I wear, and I listen to YouTube. And I'm streaming YouTube on my phone. It's a little delayed, but I get to hear all the words. So I'd like to suggest that what is needed is a microphone for each of the supervisors and staff that might answer questions as well. And to that point, I am prepared to invest the $900 for 24 microphones, battery-operated, wireless, no wires, and the control box for each eight of them, assuming that the administration and the maintenance staff could put the wires together to make it work. I'm prepared to spend the $900 so the public can hear because what you have today is microphones in the ceiling, and you've got speakers in the ceiling. And from what I've learned by asking some questions is, we've got to keep the volume turned down really low so we don't have feedback from the speaker to the microphone up in the ceiling. That's what I've learned. My offer stands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kurt Rowland.
I'm Curtis Rowland from 10803 175th Street in the town of Anson. And I thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak to you about the upcoming resettlement of refugees, not migrants, but refugees, under the auspices of the Christian nonprofit organization World Relief. According to the information provided us by World Relief, it quote, "Provides holistic services to refugees to help them reach long-term stability and from finding gainful employment and learning how to be a good tenant, to learning English and establishing their kids in school. We, World Relief, walk with them every step of the way." World Relief also follows the strict definition of a refugee as quote, "Someone who has been forced to flee their home country due to war, violence, persecution, or well-founded fear of persecution for one of five reasons." And they list those five reasons. They are persecuted for an account of their race or ethnicity, their religion, their nationality, their political opinion, or membership in a particular social group. Refugee is an internationally recognized legal status. According to the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees, at last count, there were 36,400,000 refugees worldwide, and more are added to this number every day. World Relief has been asked by our government to help these refugees find a new home in Wisconsin, 75 of them here in our part of the state. And I understand that objections have been raised in both Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties to this humanitarian and well-organized effort to find homes and employment for these refugees. But I and many, many others feel honored by this choice. And especially in light of the impending departure of our two major hospitals, HSHS St. Joseph's and HSHS Sacred Heart, it is reassuring that we are seen as able and willing to welcome new people, ready to make this their new home, and to accept them as our new neighbors. I also understand that you, Chippewa County Board of Supervisors, are not in fact legally required either to approve or disapprove of what World Relief proposes. But I understand there will be a resolution coming before you in tonight's meeting that expresses disapproval. And I respectfully urge and request that you deny this resolution, if that is in fact the nature of that resolution. I believe it is based on misinformation and unwarranted fear. I also believe that this reaction to welcoming individuals and families who have been forced to escape from their own homes and countries, not by their choice to come here, but they have been forced to leave, that it is contrary to the best of our American traditions and to what the Bible tells us regarding strangers and foreigners in need of refuge. The parable of Jesus in the 25th chapter of the Gospel of Matthew is especially to the point. "I was hungry and you gave me food. I was thirsty and you gave me drink. I was a stranger and you welcomed me."
Your time is up, sir, thank you.
I have just four lines.
No, we've got a lot of people that want to speak. Thank you. Okay, Dave Reichel.
Dave Reichel, 1920, Chippewa Road, Bloomer, Wisconsin. Couple topics I'd like to discuss here. One of them is, one of the previous speakers spoke of this big invasion. Well, imagine what's happened in the last 600 years to the indigenous tribes and nations that were here before we were. Another topic, which someone else touched on as well, is half percent sales tax. If my memory serves me, that was supposed to sunset. Couple, three times already. It seems that every time these government people get their sticky fingers on the peasants' money, they don't like to give up that. Once they get that instituted, it just keeps coming and coming and coming. They find things to spend it on. Third topic, handicapped accessibility. I parked in the north lot out here, and I sometimes use my cane to hobble with. Imagine someone in a wheelchair. They could go all the way to the east end of the building to get in. And now there's talk of restricting access to this building to one location. Where's that going to be? I think every board member out there, including the ones up here in front, should have to park their hinder in a wheelchair for a week. And then wheel it by hand all around this building, and maybe a few places elsewhere in the community. So they learn what it's like to be challenged with physical challenges. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Joan Miller.
Thank you. Joan Miller, 2587 87th Street. It's Eau Claire, but at District 15 of Chippewa County. I'd like to start off by just thanking you. Thank you so much for all you do for the county. It does mean a lot, know that a lot of your time and energy goes to the... Just so much that comes before you. And thank you for the work that you have done in listening to us as we talk about the refugee resettlement. And I have no doubt that those of you that have worked so hard on this have received some of the same threats and insults as those that have spoken on the matter. Just for wanting the laws to be followed, we've been called liars, racists, white supremacists, and xenophobic. I had to look that last one up. I had no idea what that was. And so if you haven't looked that up, it's, let's see, Webster calls it "One unduly or unjustly fearful of what is foreign or foreigners." And for those of you who've used those terms towards us, and even in the media, I ask that you actually listen to the arguments for the resolution. Yes, we've heard some fearful statements, but they aren't xenophobic. They are rational, based on statistics and current refugee settlements in Wisconsin and Minnesota, such as instances where 70 to 90% of the refugee population is on government subsidies. Or the facts with those that are gainfully employed, their wages aren't spent locally or even in the state. Many times, they're just directly wired to their country of origin. Those facts should be considered. And no, there has been no comparison of those settlement failures with Hmong refugees. The Hmong settlements in the Chippewa Valley have been excellent examples for others to follow. The Hongs have been a welcome asset to the communities. And if this current settlement from Burma, Somalia, or wherever, if it was handled in the same way as the Hmong settlement, we wouldn't be here tonight discussing it. Unfortunately, the Eau Claire City Manager's Office and World Relief quietly and unilaterally entered that voluntary agreement which affects all of us in the 100-mile radius. And it failed to follow the law. Hear me. The law was not and is not being followed. And I encourage you to look at the resolution. It is in the packet for tonight. It's on page 23, I believe, is where it ended up on mine. And in that resolution, it says specifically what the law is. And it states, there are so many of must or will, shall. Those aren't negotiable. That's what needs to be done. The law was scripted that way for the benefit of both the citizens and the refugees, and to provide for that successful transition. And I do encourage you, look at the wording of that. And now that you know why many of us want the resolution, I ask the board to vote on the side of integrity. We're watching for your vote. Be an example for other counties to follow. Vote in favor of the resolution to pause. That's all we're asking for, is to pause it until the law is followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, Scott Bolstead. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Scott Bolstead from the City of Eau Claire. I had been involved in this issue since I first heard about it on Channel 18. Initially, I was unhappy that nobody knew this was coming. They'd been working out for seven months, said nothing to nobody. And I don't know why you people are unhappy about this because it's not like the City of Eau Claire goes into Chippewa County. That's a joke. I should have told you, especially. But it seemed like the City of Eau Claire cares about you only on the 31st of January when that first property tax payment is due. Okay. So recently, GAF laid off 600. American Phoenix dropped their third shift. Hutchinson Technology is laying off 90. And then the closures of Sacred Heart, St. Joseph's, and Preia Health System. I think that shoots the argument that we really need the workforce. That's why we need to bring them here. Shoots that one down. And throughout this whole thing, I have been very careful to warn people not to conflate refugees with illegal immigrants. I was wrong. You know, in the last 37 months, there have been 6 million illegal entries on both the northern and southern borders of our country. They're just coming in. And of them, 2 million were gotaways. They didn't want to turn themselves in, even though they turned themselves in and they get right into the country. So what were they carrying? Was it drugs? Was it fentanyl? That's killed 100,000 people here in the last four years? That's killed 100,000 people here in the last four years? Or was it weapons? I don't know. But with that kind of number coming in, it seems crazy to me that we'd bring in more people through the refugee program. Why would you do that? Now, I urge you, what you do here tonight is gonna reverberate throughout the state, one way or the other. I urge you to vote yes to this resolution. In fact, I think it should be amended. You should put a moratorium on until the federal government gets control of the borders, then allow them in. That's all I have to say. Good luck and God bless.
Thank you. Dwayne Schubridge?
Dwayne Schubridge, Bloomer, Wisconsin. I've been at all the meetings and the hearings, I was really proud of Jason Bergeron, who asked the questions and had World Relief up here, and actually got her to admit through her silence that their program could crash our budget. Their program is a threat to our economy in Chippewa Falls. And then through her silence and her stare back at the group, you could tell she didn't care, because they're still wanting to push this forward. Their response is, you do not get a say. I want to inform you that is very wrong, because this is a voluntary program. Ask them to do this in Wyoming, they cannot. Wyoming is the only state that is not on the voluntary refugee program. Madison, right now, could pass a law today and we would be off the program. World Relief is a federal government agency, they're paid by the, okay, technically they're not, but they're paid by the federal government, and they come in and they say, "We are funded by the federal government, we have the money, and you don't get a say." Well, if we don't get a say on 75 refugees, then what would give us a say if they want to do 700 next year? Or do 7,000 a year after? Federal government is pushing this program, and you can see what's happening on the southern border. On the southern border, they're wanting as many people to come in as possible. If we buy into the lie that we have no say, we have lost control over our own community. And so people may say, "We don't have the authority to do this." We've had all of our state reps and our federal reps asking you to pass this. You, as a county board, or the administrative arm of the state, the administration is going, "Hey, state, this is what our people are asking for." And we're asking for this resolution because World Relief is not following the law, they're vagrantly not following the law, and they're stating mistruth, like, "We don't matter." We do matter. This is our community. Chippewa County is not gonna become an open border state, and we need to stand up. I want to encourage you to Google "Tom Tiffany refugee," just put those three words into Google, and you'll find what Tom Tiffany's been finding out, the horrific standards of federal government's vetting. The dangers Wisconsin is in now, just ordinary refugees, not illegal immigration, refugee vetting is atrocious. They won't give them answers. Our own federal reps can't get answers on the vetting process. And as has been mentioned before, our stability going in. So I wanted to encourage you, you do have the authority. This is a dangerous implementation of a process, because it's not being filed legally. And so let your voice be heard, pass the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Judge Lane?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to talk about Randy's report to you tonight on security. He's put together a very nice report explaining the background of our investigation here in the county. I spoke to you last June, and I had asked that after we had our recent incidents in May of last year, that we do some action to try and improve security in this courthouse. And as we discussed, it was a courthouse-wide issue, not just a second-floor issue. It affects all of our departments, not just the courts. And I was looking for some action to be done, and Randy has put together a report recommending three options for you. And so I know that nothing is going to happen with the board as it stands right now. Some of you are going to be leaving us, and so we need to recommend to the next board something that needs to be done. And we need to do something in terms of a recommendation to let them understand what needs to be done. A lot of the individuals that may be coming in that are new, that will be new, may not have the background of what happened back in 2014 when the original integrated security plan was implemented. They may not know of all the good things we've done since then. A lot of good improvements have been made to the courthouse since then. But they may also not know that in that plan, there were some items that were not implemented. The fiscal year 19 items were never implemented. We did know back in 2014 of some of the weaknesses that we had. As Randy's letter discusses, we now have reconfirmed that there are weaknesses here in this building. And so we do need to do something going forward. In terms of my recommendation and my influence to you, you have your own vote, but of the three options that Randy will be presenting to you tonight, that you need to think about for a potential vote in March, I would urge you not to support the second option. The second option, I feel, is the status quo. That was what was done previously, as the years go by and budgets are in place, that improvements can be made on a department-wide basis as those projects are planned. That's what we've been doing before, and as we know, in 2019, we didn't do them all. Leaving things unaddressed, that means those weaknesses remain. I think we need to address either the options one or three in your recommendation to the next board. Something should be done, something different, and then, yes, I understand, it's not going to be as convenient to our public, it is probably going to be expensive, it will be burdensome to have our county courthouse change, but it will be safer. And every department, regardless of the improvements that were made to each of those departments since 2014, still has security issues they are dealing with. So let's try to do something here, make a recommendation to this next board. As you're thinking about Randy's report tonight, think about what that message should be so the next board can implement something to finish the job. I want to thank Randy for all that he's done, I want to thank you all for putting the attention in this since June of last year, and I wish you would please present that to the next board in a way so they understand the issue, and then we'll take action. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lee Henick?
Lee Henick, City of Eau Claire, County of Chippewa, District 15. [speaking Chinese]. Now, did that make you guys feel uncomfortable? A little different? I spent most of my career overseas, particularly in the Middle East, and I stood neck and neck with Afghan special forces who died for us. And I saw them and their families treated horribly. In Laos in 1971, the Hongs stood by us, took horrendous casualties, and suffered for years because they stood by us. What the Afghans did to the Hongs suffered. The Hongs have made a wonderful presence in the valley. I have neighbors that are Hongs, I speak Hong. But I also look at what happened in Germany, Finland, Denmark, Norway, and Sweden, when the vetting process was failed, and the problems it has created. Here in Chippewa County, we have an obligation to ourselves and to our families and to our children. And if, in fact, the federal government has failed in their message, which I suspect they have in their vetting, we have an obligation to rouse our politicians, our state senators, our state representatives, to do the job correctly. We all have an obligation to our families and our children, and I think most people that I know in Chippewa and Eau Claire County will give a person an even break. They gave the Hongs even a break, and they've turned out wonderful. But I looked what happened in Germany two years ago at Christmas, please look it up. And I look what happened in Norway, Sweden, and it scares me a little bit. But I want our community to stay as giving and caring and loving people who offer people a chance to grow, but also want to protect ourselves. And we haven't, the federal government has obviously done a horrible job, and until we get them to do their job, we have to protect each other, watch each other's backs. Kind of an army thing. And that doesn't include prohibiting people from coming in and getting help like we did with the Hongs. The Hongs stood tall, and they helped us. And in 1971, I worked with the Hongs in the jungles, and they got me home from this. They made sure I got home. And I'm grateful for that, I'm grateful for having known them, and I'm grateful for living with them today. But I don't think in today's world, we can assume that that next people are gonna be the same way. And we should, as a county, endeavor to get our federal officials to do their job and make sure that everybody is protected, including the people coming in. We owe, I owe you. I stood with the Constitution and with this country for 50 years, and I still stand with it. I did my job, I did it well, and I think we all can do a good job too. Don't let our prejudice get in the way, but let it blind us that this is what we have to do. I think we should slow things up, get the federal government involved, hold them accountable. Why is not Mr. Van Orden here? Why is not the representatives from both our state offices here? Why is Mr. Tiffany not here? I don't understand that. This is a federal issue that we should hold them accountable. They're part of our, we're their constituents. So, thank you, and leave your heart open, but be cautious.
Thank you. Now, we have the downstairs group.
Yep. I don't know if you want to read like three names that have to come up.
Okay. Next, they have Josie Pillman, and then Joanne Uptal, and Slesia Cooper. And so if they wanted to head up this way, Josie would be first, then Joanne, and then, if I get this right, Cecilia Cooper. Josie. Josie Pillman is first, Josie.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Josie Pillman, I'm from Nap. I would like to vote in affirmative to support the refugee resettlement resolution. Thank you.
Joanne Uptal? Joanne?
My name is Joanne Uptal, I'm from Boyceville, Wisconsin. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. All I'd like to say is that I'm in support of the refugee resettlement, I mean, the refugee resolution. I hope that you vote to support it. Thank you.
Cecilia? And on deck will be William Uptal.
Cecilia Cooper of Menominee, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight to ask you to please vote in support of the refugees resettlement solution, resolution to halt the placement of refugees in the Chippewa Valley and beyond because of the 100-mile radius that they can place individuals in, that affects me in Dunn County. And so I wanted to come here and speak to you about the importance of passing this resolution, so the law has been followed, and feasibility studies have been completed that will show what the impact will be to our schools, to our hospitals, to the taxpaying citizens of these counties, to our sheriff's departments. This is the kind of information that should be completed for us who live in this community so that we know the true cost of bringing individuals into our community. World Relief supports them for 90 days. After that, it becomes the responsibility of the local governments to support these individuals through tax dollars. So this is a matter of following the law and a matter of us having representation for how our tax dollars are being sent. So again, please vote in support of the refugee resettlement resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. William is up next, and then Kayleen. Then Kayleen would be after William. So William Uptal?
Good evening, thank you for allowing all of the public input on this important matter. My name's William Uptal. I live at E. 1396 State Road 64, Boyceville, Wisconsin, which is in Dunn County. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I am within the 100-mile radius that this refugee resettlement can potentially impact. And I am asking for the board to vote in favor of this resolution. We need to take a pause here. Laws have not been followed. If you read 8 U.S. Code, Section 1522, there is specific wording in there that local elected officials are supposed to be involved in this process. And the reason why that wording is in there is because if you are left out of it, after 90 days, an awful lot of expenses is gonna fall on the county coffers. And so that amounts to taxation without representation. That is the specific reason why that wording is in there, of why you all were supposed to be included in these talks, and you weren't. So, please, vote yes. So please vote yes in favor of this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up is Kayleen. And then John. Premister.
The next one said no, thank you.
So Kayleen's not going to speak? Okay. Then John. Yep. Perma Steiner. Perma Steiner. And then Tom Irwin after that, and Eric Wilson.
John Perma Steiner, Menominee, Wisconsin. I please vote in support of the refugee settlement resolution to halt the placement of the refugees in Chippewa Valley and beyond until the law has been followed and impact studies have been completed. Thank you.
I want to start by saying that if you ever read the book about the Pearl Harbor bombing, at dawn, we slept. And that's what we're doing now. At dawn, we are sleeping. We're not believing the information that's coming across, even when you have something as clear as the Muslim Brotherhood explanatory moratorium telling us what they're going to do, that they must understand that their work in America is a kind of jihad in eliminating and destroying the Western civilization from within and sabotaging its miserable house by their hands and the hands of the believer so that it is eliminated and God's religion remains victorious over all other religions. When they say God's religions, they're talking about Islam. It was Adolf Hitler who said, "You tell a lie often enough and loud enough, and it becomes the truth in the most important place, in the minds of the people." Our government's been doing an awful lot of lying. If you've been paying attention about that, how secure our border is. We keep being told by the federal government, "The border is secure." Look at COVID-19 destruction that we had dumped on us by our federal government because we complied with it. Now, if you go back to this explanatory moratorium from 1991, when it was written, in 2001, they gave us the gift of 9/11. Then we go on to 2002. Now, these are some things that we kind of forget about. The D.C. sniper attacks. John Allen Muhammad, Lee Boyd Malvo, had joined Islam in 1987. They gave us the gift of the D.C. snipers. 2004, the FBI discovers this. 2002, 2003, a family of six migrated, immigrants. And the FBI was notified... They became U.S. citizens. The FBI was notified that they're a potential threat. The FBI investigated and determined they were not a threat. And what do you know? They gave us the Boston Marathon bombing on April 15th of 2013. So they're not kidding when they tell us what they're going to do. And why would we do that? Not to mention the things that are going on all the time. Europe is having a real hard time with the Muslim rape gangs that go around and essentially just do what they want. And they're going to assimilate. Really? This professor from Minnesota did a study for Minnesota. 57% of them are still taking government money. They're not supporting themselves. Why would we bring that into our community? They do not assimilate. They will not. The Corian forbids it. If you're interested in the Second Amendment, anybody who's not a Islamic Muslim is not allowed to have any weapons for protection. And I'm sure you heard the proposal by our administration that maybe we need to use our federal park and forest land to build immigrant camps. 2015, San Bernardino shooter pledged allegiance to ISIS. And our President Obama told us that ISIS has nothing to do with Islam. Michael Flynn, the Director of Defense Intelligence Agency, said, "You cannot defeat an enemy that you do not admit exists." He lost his job. Another man who was in the ground floor of Homeland Security, Philip Heen, he came and spoke to us. And he explained what was happening, how the Homeland Security was being infiltrated and replaced during the Obama administration. He said, "I don't have any suicidal thoughts. I'm not going to commit suicide." But what do you know? He did. He was murdered. So you're called today for action for your country. Our federal government and our state government is not going to do it. This is going to happen county by county. We're the ones... The way it's supposed to work, instead of top-down like a communist country, it's supposed to be from the bottom up because the 10th Amendment of the Constitution gives the states equal rights with the federal government. Wyoming was smart enough to say, "Nah, we're not doing it." These refugees that come in, they are like the scouts. They get to communicate with their cell phones all the time. Why else would all these YouTube people down at the border, when they're filming and they're asking them all, "Where are you going?" They all know where they're going because they've got this communication. So the illegals coming across the border, they already know because of the scouts that are already here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We call upon you to pass this.
Time is up.
Good evening. My name's Eric Wilson. I'm a candidate for the 3rd Congressional District. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for everything that you do. I know that it's a lot of difficult decisions and a lot of emotions that we have to deal with and fight through on a daily basis. So I appreciate all the hard work that this board does. Look, I get it. There are some outstanding questions around the refugee settlement. Emotions are high, and I'm sure there's a lot of people that feel that the federal government has not done their due diligence in communicating what is happening. I'm with you. There needs to be more transparency, and there needs to be more working with state and local around some of these bigger issues. The reality is that these refugees are coming from distressed places. They have gone through a vetting process with our military, with our government. And really, they're just looking to help take care of their family, which I think is what most of us want to do. We want to just do what's best, have the ability to work hard, and take care of the ones that we love. This is their opportunity. They've gone through our process, and this is their opportunity to take care of their family. I know we're going through a lot of changes here in the community, but we do have the capacity to support the 75 people. Working together, federal, state, local, we can handle it, and we can make the changes needed to support not just them, but everyone here in the community. We are a community that is welcoming. We are a community that takes care of our neighbors, and we are a community that gives people the opportunity to live the life that they want. And that's what these people are just asking for. So I'm asking you to vote in against this resolution and hold with our Wisconsin values of taking care of people and allowing us to build a community that is suited for everyone, regardless of our differences. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the list that I have for members of the public wishing it was heard. So we will then move on to the consent agenda. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
One second.
One second, so, okay. Okay. Hearing none, then to approve consent agenda, press your green button. To disapprove, press red.
21, yes. Zero, no.
Agenda passes. Then we'll move on to reports, starting with the county administrator review and updates. And this will be the update on courthouse security. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Randy Schultz. I'm the county administrator. I sent a letter out to the board back in January to start talking about or give an update on the court's security. The board asked me to look into a single point of entrance after we had an incident. So considering that it's getting close to the April 2020... Excuse me, 2024 election, the idea is to ask for a recommendation from this county board for the new board. Since last fall, Larry Ritzinger, the facilities parks director, and I have been reviewing options for a single point of entry if the county board decides to move in that direction. After talking with the county board and other county administrators, the suggestion was to contact the U.S. Marshal Service. They provide security or analysis of courthouses. I did that. I talked to Tammy Johnson, who came for an afternoon and looked at our facility. I was really looking for the best option for a single point of entry, but she kind of did a cursory review of our overall security. Larry and I also met with a world architect and engineering to discuss options for a single point of entry. And there's really only one viable option for a single point. That's the northwest entrance by the Registered Deeds Department. And the reason for that is the space, the ingress and egress needed for moving people in back and forth through that entrance. And I put a pretty big range in here for expenditures. Really would depend on what the county board decides, if you decide to go to the single point. The reason for the big number, between $500 million and $1 million, is because if we decide, or if you decide to allow employees to use all other entrances, there is technology that we can use that can allow them to scan in and scan out that won't allow people to piggyback, they call it, get in without others knowing about it. So... But it is very expensive, obviously, so... So really, this is what... I came up with three options, and obviously, there could be other options that you recommend. And this is just... Tonight is just... You guys have an opportunity to look this over. This is the way we like to bring things forward to you guys. I know it's been really hectic, and it seems like we have to bring things. You don't have time to think about it. So this is an opportunity for you to kind of look these over, get feedback from your constituents, and then give a recommendation to the next board. So the plan moving forward is to receive... When we receive the guidance from the county board is to have our Elevated Threat Security Work Group work on recommendations that include the U.S. Marshal, the previous report, and then Larry and I will bring those options and appropriate... To appropriate committees and the county board. So the request is to... At the next meeting, I'll bring forward more. I'll kind of talk about 1, 2, and 3 and have more options. Really, the first option, there's a lot of things to consider. So I'll have that next time before you guys have to vote, and you can kind of look at those more. And then 2 and 3, as you can see the options there. But there may be other options that the county board comes up with, and whatever you guys decide at the end of the day is how we'll move forward. So is there any questions at this time? Thank you.
Okay. Next is CIP updates.
All right. Here's our annual update that we always give every year in February. Just a reminder that this is a little bit of a history about the implementation, but capital projects are costs that are over $50,000, and they have a useful life of more than three years. This slide shows our sales tax funding and bonds funds that have been used for the last three budgets for the CIP. And this slide just talks about how the next slides will look. For the radio tower project, we thought the project was over, but we ended up finding out that the Y radio tower building was in poor condition. So we are fixing that. So then all the buildings for the radio towers, along with the radio towers, will be updated. And they are planning that it should be done here in the late spring, early summer. Here are your 2021 projects, which were in progress last year at the last time we discussed this. All of them, except one, have been completed in 2023. And here's the remaining 2021 projects, which were in progress. You'll see they're all completed. And for the 2021 projects that were completed in 2023, we returned $53,847,000 back to sales tax. Because remember, that is how... However, the project is initially funded. If it's sales tax funds that are paying for it, it goes back to the sales tax fund when the project is complete and if it's under budget. Here are the 2022 CIP projects, which were still in progress the last time I had given this report to you guys. You'll see that most of them... There's some of them... Sorry, the window... The jail window project is still in progress, and we're dealing with a caulking issue, so hopefully, that will be resolved quickly. And we're waiting for a dump truck for the facilities and parks department. And here are the 2022 projects, which were in progress. You'll see that they're all completed on this page. And for all the 2022 projects, which were completed in 2023, I have transferred back $98,388 back to the sales tax fund. And here are your 2023 projects. The projects on this slide are still all in progress. And here is another slide of 2023 CIP projects. You'll see there's only two that are completed, and it's because neither one of them had a project associated with it for this year, the county stewardship fund and the county forest land acquisition. And for the 2020... Oh, I'm sorry. On this page here, we have the 911 radio tower pro... Sorry, 911 phone system. Sorry, radio tower project is on my brain, apparently. That phone system is to go live here in just a couple of weeks because we had some delivery issues for some of the equipment from our vendor. So for the projects, 2023 projects, which were completed last year, there was $600 that went back to the sales tax fund. And here are the 2024 CIP projects, which you approved in June. And here is the end of the 24 projects. And in summary, most... We really made really good progress in 2023 with our projects. I feel like... I feel like I was able to say "completed." So I was excited. The department heads have received their guidelines for the next year's budget, for 2025 budgets. And so you'll hear at your policy committee meetings where for the departments who are requesting CIP project funds or CIP projects, they'll be bringing it forward to your policy committees in March. And then the final report will be in June. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Good morning.
Okay, Chuck, yep.
So just to clarify, the... Many of the projects that were hanging out with large values in red were waiting for grant dollars or something to account for those.
If they're in red, like those right there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what happened with the highway and bridges, that would have been because of the fact that we have funds at the highway department that they have from... Each year, they just keep rolling those funds within there, so that's how they paid for it. So it was funds within that department. The Boundary Waters project, I showed that we transferred $50,000 back to the sales tax fund because that... We only spent $2,004 on that project. Doesn't qualify as a capital project because it's got to be over $5,000 before we're going to consider it a capital project as a fixed asset. And then the last one is that clerical room redesign. Okay? Yeah, each one is a little unique. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to pop on out and over at my office, and I'll definitely share with you what I know.
Anyone else? Oh, okay. We'll move to the next one, to the business item. I didn't know you were here for speaking.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we will move down to business items. Number one, authorizing the county board chair administrator to testify in favor of a bill to reallocate 15 million emergency services for Chippewa and Eau Claire County. Randy Schultz.
Do you want a motion put on the floor?
Yep. I would seek a motion at this time to put it on, or excuse, to approve, a motion to approve. Okay. Okay, siding second, and Chuck Hall need the motion. Okay, discussion.
Thanks, Chair. This is how we don't like to bring things forward. Luckily, the chair was in my office Friday afternoon, so we were able to get this on the agenda. But we've discovered, or heard Friday afternoon, that a Senate bill, that's originally heard about, it was coming forward. And there's two bills. The one bill is to reallocate the $15 million in funds that were allocated, I believe it was two bienniums ago in the budget. And the purpose of that was going to be used to create beds, mental health beds at HSHS here in Chippewa Falls. HSHS turned down those funds, so they've been sitting there. And Senator James has brought forward that they would take those funds, move them out of what they're, where they're currently being allocated into the general fund. And then the second bill is to allow, to use those funds for emergency room purposes. In there, it says capital expenditures. The definition of capital expenditures, I'm not exactly sure what that is on the state level. Obviously, we have very strict rules for capital expenditures, so I'm not sure what that really means. But what we've heard from Senator James rep, or office staff, is that he wants to reallocate these funds so they don't go to another part of the state for some other purpose, and that obviously, what we've been hearing in all the meetings we've been to, and he's been probably more than we have, is the number one issue is to keep the ERs open. And this is a way to at least have some funds available in order to do that. So that's the purpose of the, of.
Any questions? Tuteberg? Okay, all right.
Randy, do, have the hospitals, HSHS, or even Purvea, I don't know, Purvea doesn't offer emergency care, but HSHS, have they indicated that they'd be open to the idea, or has there been any indication from them whatsoever, even contact about this?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know if Senator James has had conversations with them. What I've still heard is HSHS won't really talk to anybody. I don't know if that's the case in this. And there's really, I mean, to me, when this was brought forward, and we were in a meeting when it was dropped, or the press release came out, and we just happened to have the representative from Senator James' office in the meeting. And my concern was, one, the word was capital, and a little concerned about that, because I know what operations and what that definition is. He explained capital's not as set that we're used to as strict, and the Joint Finance Committee ultimately would have say on how the grants are spent. So there's still another step that you'd have to go through in order to spend these. But to me, there's a big difference between keeping the current, the emergency rooms open and seeing if Marshfield, or Mayo, or maybe somebody else wants to build one and extend it. So that's a huge, I think, cost difference and a huge operational and timeframe. So they have to submit a plan with the grant, and I think that's pretty wide open for, obviously, for what's happening right now. But it's tried, the purpose is to try and keep emergency rooms open with the two entities or in some form.
So the brass tacks of this is make monies available should HSHS choose to do that. Otherwise, the other area hospitals would have the availability of these funds unallocated, basically, at that point, to build on, to grow, to make them larger for the ER centers.
Correct. It says that any, any health system can apply for the grant.
Thank you.
Peter?
Who is going to have control over where the money goes?
Joint Finance. They have control. I think they'd probably have, it's called a 310 hearing, which means emergency hearing, so, because they're going to be out of session here in a couple of weeks. That's the other reason for this happening so quick. They have to get this through before everybody goes home, essentially, Madison. And we heard that they're going to be in session till the end of the month. But it would ultimately be the choice of Joint Finance.
Anyone else? Okay. Do you have to read the?
Yep, not this one.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, then we'll go call the vote. Find where I put my button. Favor, push the green button, those opposed, press red.
21 yes, 0 no.
Passes. Okay, move on to Resolution 624. Resolution requests immediate pause of refugee resettlement under the Refugee Act. Between Randy and I, we're just buzzing, so I guess I'm the person to speak on this. But I will at this time request the motion to approve. Glenn Skorsky, and is there a second? Please, Tuteberg. Okay. So this is how fast things are happening. At 2:5, at 24, myself and the administrator were called to a meeting at the Eau Claire, reference the refugee situation. And so at that time, it's the first time, literally, that Chippewa County was brought to the table. And present there was Congressman Van Orden, Tiffany was there, all of our representatives state were either there, I think, some were on virtual. And so this whole thing was put out in front of us. And so what I want to tell you about really is, is the law, that you hear people talking about the law, the law followed or law not followed. So what they're talking about is the U.S. Immigration and Nationality Act, as amended by the Refugee Act of 1980, as federal law 8 USC 15.22, and this is the one here, requires the federal government to consult with state and local governments before refugee placement. So I then find out that there's a hearing the next day, following day, on this in our Assembly, in our Senate. And what it is, it's a communication, communication bill that was put forward, Senate Bill 916 and Assembly Bill 1004. And so what was discussed is, what is your state and local, you know, it requires that contact, the state and local governments, but who? Does that mean the water meter reader? Or does that mean the elected officials? And so this whole bill that they put forward is to identify that it's the elected bodies. And so that each of the elected bodies should appoint a person to be a contact person. So therefore, then it comes to elected, elected folks. And so in the process, Congressman Van Orden, I don't know if anyone knows him, he's a Navy SEAL, but not only was he a Navy SEAL, he did the vetting process for Navy SEAL candidates. He's a background investigator, just like I was doing background investigations. Serious flaws in the background investigation were discovered, were found. That is not what was addressed by our Senate and our Assembly. The thing that was addressed there was the local contact. So those bills are moving, moving forward. Want to log on, I'm not sure if they've had the votes on those yet. But what it basically is saying is that when an organization comes in, and there's three or four of these different organizations, when they come in to bring refugees in, we will be defining on the state of Wisconsin and the statute. It's in 66 of the Wisconsin statutes, chapter 66. So that, they're making a statute to define who will be the contacts. And that will be the government, elected government officials, whether it be a county board chair, or a city council president, president, that those will be the contact points that these organizations would then go to. So that's now defined, or will be defined if it is passed by our legislature. So as far as our resolution, you know, we requested a pause. Now, I was informed at the meeting that the world relief, that there was a pause put on the settlement. Basically, to kind of air this thing off. So we have a resolution that would, I guess, reaffirm that, that's okay, let's pause and get this thing fixed. And I am impressed, because government usually doesn't move real quick. In this case, like you say, the fifth and on the sixth and seventh, the Assembly and the Senate actually already took actions to make this definition. So as we move forward to vote on that, I hope I filled in the blanks, because if they say, well, the law isn't being followed, what law were they talking about? This is the law that they were talking, that the government officials weren't. And due to the lack of federal definition as to who these are, then the states have the authority to make that definition. So anyway, any questions? Okay, George?
So if this is moving through the state government, why are we even doing this? Because apparently, what you said is that we are just agreeing with them to do this to something that's already been done. So we're just validating that.
Well, what is, in state government, they want to hear from the constituents. They want to hear from us, the people. So since we already had this, these things certainly didn't flow together, you know, they actually got ahead of us on this. So they want to know, I mean, what we, what we vote on here is going to tell them, yes, this is, they should continue on this path of making this definition, or no, they shouldn't. So that's, that's what it's about right now. Our bill here, or our resolution, is basically voicing to our state representatives, representatives, what our desires and wishes are. That's the best I got for you. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start out my comments tonight the same way that I started on my executive committee for how many meetings that we've had, that I was frustrated with the lack of communication from our neighbors to the south. I've made that public at every meeting, and there's room for improvement in this process. And as you mentioned, tonight, you know, down in Madison, they're talking about clarifying and producing some new standard, standard operating procedures around this. That's good, we need that. We could be, you know, as we've done in the past, be debating resolutions to support, you know, specific, specific bills being considered, and then kind of even add our extra in, or ask them to modify X, Y, and Z, things of that nature. We could be talking about a plan to work with local municipalities and try to build our, our own memorandum of understanding, our own standard operating procedures, because I don't, I don't think I'm way off in saying, knowing that there's split powers in Madison and split powers in Washington, the odds of something comprehensive getting passed are probably low at this point. What, what we have before us tonight is more than just a communication of desire, a communication of, we would like this. This, this goes beyond just wanting clarification and definition on the project in our community. This, this goes out to the entire state of Wisconsin. And I don't think I'd have to imagine too much if some county in southern Wisconsin started trying to dictate what we did up in our county. I don't think that would go over very well. I'm not saying we shouldn't work on improving the process. That's why I had a number of questions for World Relief when they were here in December. I asked tough questions, and I felt that that was needed. I would say my takeaway from that meeting was different than described, but that's fine, because we'd heard about earlier tonight, but that's fine, because everyone has the right to their own opinion on that. But I really think we should be focusing on solutions that could be implemented here in the Chippewa Valley, because, like I said, I don't have a ton of faith that Madison and Washington are going to be able to come together for bipartisan solution on this. So that's, that's really where I continue to get stuck on this, is we're asking to dictate to the entire state of Wisconsin, all 72 counties, what their priorities should or shouldn't be. We, we're here to represent the, the local community and build local solutions. We're not sending off resolutions to Washington, saying, please balance the budget. You know, this just seems out of our jurisdiction and heavy-handed. And if we pass this, I believe it will hurt relationships between other local municipalities and us, and relationships, we're going to need to try to build clarity and standard operating procedures if other projects like this ever come about. I really feel this is going to be counterproductive. Openly acknowledge that this process was frustrating, and there is room for improvement. That's, that's why I asked so many difficult questions to World Relief when they were here. But it wasn't because I thought someone was trying to pull the wool over our eyes. I was trying to identify how locally we could start coming up with ideas and implement something in the right way, something locally as a community. Thank you.
Supervisor Tuteberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo Mr. Bergeron's sentiment that, that a lot of eyes are on us right now statewide because of this resolution. However, I don't worry about statewide eyes. At this point, I worry about the eyes of the voters and the people of the Chippewa Valley, specifically Chippewa County, who may be directly impacted by this. And so while we may be on the forefront, while we may be on the thoughts and minds of people who are seeing this, we have the duty to represent the people here first, and this is far and away, through all the connections, communications, and contacts I've had over the past several weeks, far and away, many people are in support of this current resolution. So with that being said, I'd also address Mr. Romeyer's sentiment as to why we are taking this forward, is because we are those representatives who represent the people's will, and this is what clearly and loudly has been stated by the people, and therefore, I am in full support of this resolution.
Mr. Romeyer?
I've been walking my district, talking with voters, and asking them about their concerns. I have not had one voter in my district express, express concern about the refugee resettlement issue. I have had voters in my district tell me they support the resettlement. As a Chippewa County supervisor, my concern is for the voters in my district. I am their messenger. This resolution has no legal standing and is only a statement of a group of people who are apparently afraid of welcoming fellow human beings from other countries into America. These people are seeking shelter from oppression and terrorism for themselves and their children.
Joel?
I just want to dictate what Robert said. I'm all for this resolution. I'm on the opposite end of George. I have not had anybody contact me that supports, that does not support this resolution. They want to put the brakes on it. All we hear about is the refugees' families, and I think we have to look out for our community's families, the health of our community. With all the layoffs that are coming, we got to worry about our health care. We got to worry about the housing crisis. And I don't think our community is ready for the impact that this could bring. So I think we definitely have to vote for this resolution tonight, and I'm all in support of it.
Thank you. Kayden Berg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that I echo the statements of Supervisor Romeyer and Bergeron, and that I'm not in favor of this resolution. I also believe that this resolution, as is written, does not paint a good picture of Chippewa County and will only hurt us in the long run. Thank you.
Glenn Skorsky?
I just want to echo Joe and Bob's sentiment. I had the most calls just about on this, that I. that I ever had, and absolutely supporting this resolution to do this and put the brakes on things. I just have had the most emails ever. Just wanted to pass that on.
Mr. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think all of us here are responsible for our constituents. Now, I saw this as a very important issue, so I did a cross-section poll of my constituents. I fielded phone calls, was talked to by people on the street. I had 100% of the people that contacted me or that I talked to that were in favor of this resolution. So I'm going to abide by their wishes in my vote.
Thank you. Annette Hunt?
Supervisor Hunt.
Yes, Supervisor Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. So I haven't heard from any of my constituents about this issue either. And as a Catholic Christian, and coming up on Lent, starting tomorrow, I can't in good conscience vote positive. I can't approve this. It's, it's something that's against my moral fiber. And I, I feel as though we, as a board, are being put into a political position. We are a nonpartisan board. And I feel like we are being used as a political pawn right now. And I am, I am not about that right now. And forever. We're nonpartisan. This is ridiculous. So I am not going to approve this.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I too am concerned about the vetting process. I don't trust our federal government's vetting process until they can show us that they have an outstanding program of vetting people. I say, yes, we need to sit back, take a look, and say, wait a minute, hold on here. The other concern I have is public safety. I was involved in public safety for a long time. And I'm concerned that our law enforcement gets overwhelmed if, like what happened in Whitewater, where they had a couple hundred people come in, suddenly there are like over a thousand people that have come in. And their law enforcement's overwhelmed, their budgets are getting busted, their, you know, it's just chaos down there. And if we can prevent that, I think it's our duty to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Steele?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, what we're, what we're doing here is asking something to send down to Washington and Madison, telling them, slow down. Or not, one time saying that it's, you know, we're behind or against it. We're just saying, slow down and go by the law. That's it. So I agree that a lot of people need some help. But let's do it right. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, I'm going to put you to work.
I'm going to speak on this issue. I've been in the forefront of this. This, this is not a politic, political football. I was there. I heard the people testify. I saw the counts, the counts that came through from both the Assembly and the Senate. We're in favor of doing this. We're defining a communication network here. What we're doing here is basically saying, hey, we saw something here. The information wasn't there. Stop. Let's let us see what's going on. That's not, we're against refugees. That's not making any statement of the sort. It's a statement about the process. And so what our legislators are working on is the process. Everybody in the federal government on basically said that U.S. Code, because it did not define the government persons. Yes, that's a barrier, and not only here, it's in every state that has it. Because who is a government person? In this particular situation, it was an aide to, was it the administrator? Anyway, it, so it wasn't an elected official. And so that's, that's the key. And like say, if you watch Congress or whatever, when they made that definition, they left it wide open, you know. But I'm certainly sure that they didn't, they weren't expecting our postman to weigh in on this. It's for the elected officials. And so what we're saying is pause and stop and take a look at this. And they're doing that. And now our representatives, as they work through this, and, you know, the, the bill, they want to know what we think. And I would encourage you, if you have a point on it, to contact them and let them know. But take a look at the bill first. Take a look at the, the proposed statute change. This has nothing to do with race, religion, or anything at all. This is about the process. And that was an issue that Mr. Bergeron clearly pointed out, and I've pointed out before, too. It was clumsy. It was really clumsy. And then after the committee in Eau Claire, they took a look at it. Yeah, there were a lot of heads nodding going, yeah, we need to, we need to get this fixed, including our congressmen who are there going. Yeah, we're embarrassed because to leave it undefined as to government official, that is so broad. And I'm certain that the intent, if you would go back, would be that they didn't intend this to be, like I say, some postman or just any government. They wanted to go to the elected people because we're the ones that are going to be saying yes or no to the funds that we put in place. We're the ones that are going to be doing the things to, to help them, whether it's through our charities or whatever. There was not one person that testified on this issue that said this was, we were trying to be racist or whatever. This is about a process, a communication process. And that was pounded in speaker after speaker. This is about communication. That's about us being able to communicate with the federal government and these people the way the federal was intended to be. So I, I understand both sides of the coin, folks. And as I stated before, my wife, myself, we, we support a young lady in a foreign country. Okay. This isn't about racism, folks. It's about process. It's about getting things fixed so we do it right.
Mr. Schmidt, it's all yours.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. Jack, you ready for vote? Okay, all in favor, use your green button, and all opposed, your red button. Yep.
Fifteen yes, six no.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution seven twenty-four.
You read the resolution?
Yep.
Okay.
Resolution number seven dash twenty-four, resolution to authorize continuation of the self-funded workers' compensation insurance program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby resolve that Chippewa County will continue the self-insured workers' compensation program that is currently in effect and comply with the requirements of Wisconsin Administrative Code, DWD eighty-sixty-three, and Chapter one oh two of the Wisconsin statutes. And be it further resolved that the county administrators authorize to forward certified copies of this resolution to the Workers' Compensation Division of the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development, and to take all steps necessary to ensure that this program is in compliance with all state statutes, rules, and regulations of the workers' compensation program, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Peterson.
Peterson makes motion approve, seconded by Supervisor Flader. Discussion.
Thanks, Chair. As a self-insured political subdivision, that's what counties are, by state statute, we're required every three years to pass a resolution indicating that the county board is okay with the status of us continuing to be self-insured. So we have to do this every three years.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Green, to push your green button to approve, red to disapprove. Might not go through?
No.
Peterson, we had a problem.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Resolution eight twenty-four.
Resolution number eight dash twenty-four, resolution to establish the annual compensation for the county clerk, county treasurer, and register of deeds positions for 2025 to 2028, read by title only.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion approved by Supervisor Ives. Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Romeyer. Discussion.
Thank you, Chair. I've recommended this same philosophy that I'm going to explain here in a second for years. Previously, when I was in Lincoln County, I kind of came up with this because there's a debate about elected officials, what they get paid, what they don't get paid. I treat elected officials as like they're department heads. They have big responsibilities. They have lots of knowledge. So what we've done here in the past, and what I'm recommending again, is to have the first year be a six percent increase. And the reason for the six percent for the first year is a catch-up, I call it, because the previous three years, these positions all received a two percent raise, and all our other employees received a three percent raise unless they're in the union or had a contract. So vast majority of our employees. So the first year is three percent with a three percent catch-up, and then the next three years is two percent. And then we repeat that process after the, for the next election. And we do have to set this before they're allowed to take their nomination papers, which I believe is April fifteenth. And I have talked to the three elected officials, and they're good with this.
Okay. Any questions?
Put the thing, sorry.
I haven't seen any hands go up yet either. Okay.
Supervisor Steele, like.
He's trying to vote.
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry, Buck.
We'll, we'll speed this up so we can.
Mr. Chair, I have just.
Yeah, Supervisor Tuteberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Randy, so this is all common for, and the budget already, these numbers are already common for?
Well, they're, they're three years, I mean, they're.
Understand.
We'll be, yeah. I don't know what we put in. Typically, we'd probably put in for the twenty twenty-five or four budget, or twenty twenty-five, it wouldn't be till, right? Yeah. So it won't be till twenty twenty-five, so we will. Yep, sorry.
Thank you.
There is focus there.
Anyone else? Now, we can go to push green to approve or red to disapprove.
Whenever you're ready.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Okay. Number five. Resolution passes.
We're on the ordinances. I don't.
Ordinances. Okay, we're looking at number five ordinance to amend section seven dash six eight regarding the residential one district, or one, second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, Romeyer and Jason seconds. And then we'll go to discussion.
Yeah, Doug Clary is your zoning director to speak on this.
I went over it last month, the revisions. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer those.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Then we will take the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Say what?
Twenty yes, one no.
Ordinance passes. So what, number six? Ordinance two twenty-four to amend section two dash one nine regarding the Ethics Inquiring Board, second reading. May I seek a motion to approve?
Motion through.
Bergeron, seconded by Ives. Discussion.
We talked a lot about this, obviously, during the first time in the second reading. Nothing has been changed from the first reading.
Any questions? Hearing none, we will go to the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. As soon as she's ready. Okay. Dean Mueller? Dean?
I'm sorry.
Okay, when you're ready.
Twenty yes, one no.
Okay, then we're to number seven, and this is a first reading. And this would be ordinance four dash twenty-four. Linda's on?
Yeah, we got Linda and Keddie coming.
Linda and Keddie, okay. So there's no vote on this.
Hello, my name's Keddy Cloud. I'm the environmental engineer for Chippewa County Land Conservation Forest Management. I want to thank project engineer Trenton Shutter for all of his hard work mending this ordinance. Just a brief history on why we're proposing these changes. Our non-metallic mining program was audited in May of 2022 by the Wisconsin DNR. During that audit, twenty-four categories were reviewed. Fifteen were in compliance and nine were non-compliant. We've been working through those nine and have addressed all of the issues. This is the last category, the non-metallic mining ordinance that you have in front of you tonight. The sections that are proposed with changes were considered to either be more or less restrictive than NR one thirty-five, which is the state statute for non-metallic mining. And the spreadsheet you have up there are the sections that we've changed. So that's section thirty thirty-two, statutory authority, section thirty thirty-six, administration, section thirty thirty-eight, definitions, section thirty seventy-seven, non-metallic mining refuse and other solid waste, sections thirty one oh one to one oh five, section thirty one ten, change of regulatory authority, and section thirty one thirty-seven A, completed reclamation, reporting, certification, and effect. With that, I would take any questions, if you had any, if that's okay with the Chair.
Yes. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we go to number eight. Again, this is a first reading. Ordinance five dash twenty-four to amend section forty-six dash nine A regarding dog license.
All right. Too many things I want to know. So this ordinance change came about when we were cleaning up some other language in ordinances and came across that there was some outdated language in this ordinance. So it was rescinding the language from that reference. And then we also updated some of the language so it reflects exactly, like, exactly what the statutory reference is regarding the dog license fund. So this, again, is the first reading, so is approved at this.
So this, again, is the first reading, so it is approved at the second reading. It would just update and clarify the language that's in the ordinance. Someone. Supervisor Schmidt.
Oh, Supervisor Schmidt.
Yes. I have a couple of issues here. One is the $1,000 per claim limit on damages. It's unrealistic. There is a thought that this should cover the deductible on farm animals. I talked to my insurance agent, and he figures maybe 25% of his insurers actually insure their farm animals. So the vast majority of animals out here are not insured on farms anymore. And I would like to see this limit basically struck from the ordinance. And if that isn't done, then I think we need to look at the license fees themselves because why are we collecting this money that will never, basically never have the ability to use for its intended purpose and refunding it to the towns every year? And I would think that we should go back to the minimum state license fee at that point if we're not going to take this limit off. That's my thoughts, so you guys can think about it and read it over for the next meeting.
Okay, seeing none, then we will move down to item number nine, county board chair appointments. Fire warden appointments, this is pretty much an annual type of affair. We wouldn't normally be thinking much of fire this time of the year, but who knows, huh? Fire warden appointments, so. I would seek a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second by Schmidt. Seeing none, green to approve, red to disapprove.
21 yes, 0 no.
Okay, we will bounce down to number 10, county administrator appointments. These would be the county, the appointments for the IFLS board. I would seek a motion to, and also the county administrator appointments for local emergency planning commission. We do this as one, or do we got to do them separately?
They're separate.
Okay, we'll do them separately, so county administrative appointments. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Tutterberg will make a motion to approve.
Okay, Tutterberg and Bergeron for a second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, green to approve, red to disapprove. Okay, Glenn, your button didn't go.
21 yes, 0 no.
And then the last one, it's appointments approved, county administrator appointments, local emergency planning commission. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
McGill, motion and Ives for the second, yes, carry. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, green to approve, red to disapprove.
21 yes, 0 no.
Okay. And agenda consideration, be sure to get those to us because our agendas are filling up rapidly. Have some other. Yeah, so that'll be at 6:00 right. Okay. Want to make sure we got the time. We were trying to go in at 5:00 or 6:00, but, so we will have a special meeting next week, Tuesday, and it'll start at 6:00 PM. It'll be here. Agenda should be coming out of that, or is it out already? Not out yet. It should be coming out soon. Do I hear a motion to approve or adjourn?
Eric will make that motion to adjourn. For God's sakes.
Is there a second? Side of the sec. Any discussion?
Yes, don't.
Yep. Any discussion done, then we will take the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
21 yes, 0 no.
Are adjourned.